Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have of course myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, Mark Conway. Joining us virtually, Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District, Councilman Cohen of the 1st District, Councilman Glover of the 13th District, Councilwoman Porter of the 10th District, and Councilwoman Ramos of the 14th District. Representing the Office of the President, don't have anyone here today. Preston Lewis is joining us virtually. And representing the Mayor's Office, got Sophia G.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. This afternoon, the Committee will have a hearing on LO-22-0030 Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention for the purpose of the Committee holding regular hearings with the Police Department, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement, and other agencies to monitor the progress of the city's crime reduction and violence prevention efforts. This bill was sponsored by myself. And once again, good afternoon and Happy New Year. This is our first meeting of the year, so really happy to have everybody back so we can dig into these issues and hopefully find a way forward. Today, I've asked the Police Department and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement to come prepared to talk about the delicate but important issue of juvenile justice. To me, that means talking about public safety and the data around arrests for minors, but also about how we're supporting our young people and particularly their needs. Seeing young people who ought to be in school instead spending time in the streets committing crimes or getting arrested is disappointing and saddening. Ultimately, we're talking about children. And whether we're talking about children or adults, regardless, offering resources, social services, and support systems has got to be a part of the conversation. Our young people in Baltimore deserve to thrive and become functional and independent members of society. And I'm curious to hear what trends our Police Department is seeing when it comes to crimes committed by juveniles. And also want to know what information we might be gathering about young people being arrested and how it informs our proactive programs and efforts to reach young people who might be at risk of committing crimes. MONCIE has also, I believe, just begun their school-based violence intervention pilot in three Baltimore schools. And while it's still early and it's still in its early phases, I'd like to hear more about its implementation and how we're measuring its efficacy. The success of programs like this will be critical to keeping youth out of criminal justice systems in the first place so that we don't have to have difficult conversations down the line about what to do when young people who have been arrested interact with our system. But I think even more, the hope here is that these efforts can pave a path toward resiliency for young people who may have started to go down the wrong path. Lastly, I want us to, similarly to how we conducted the Squeegee hearing last summer, to be mindful of the language that we use when we talk about our young people. Crime and violence can be emotional and it's upsetting topics, but I think it's important that we don't use offensive or reductive language when talking about our young people. With that, I want to turn things over to BPD to initiate the presentation. BPD will start, MONCIE will follow, and then we'll open up the Florida questions.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, members of the Council, all who are here. I have my entire senior team with me, Deputy Commissioner, my Chief of Staff, Chief of Patrol, Chief of Investigations, and other members of our leadership team supporting the Police Department. Today, we're going to be able to let you hear about what we're doing about crime in and of itself and where we are with our quantitative assessment of crime so you can gauge how we're doing. Secondly, you're going to hear about youth violence, individuals who are participating in violence, individuals who are victims of violence, and what we are doing about that. And you're right, there are so many things that have to happen to help them. And what I think you're going to hear is you're going to hear a lot of proactivity from the Police Department in terms of arrest, of trying to arrest people who commit those crimes, a deployment strategy trying to prevent those crimes in the very first place. And what we're seeing is many of them, and we will reiterate this throughout the afternoon, are being released either no bond, low bond, with no sense of rehabilitation, no sense of supervision to change them, to keep them from doing, again, what they just got caught doing. And I think that will be kind of the theme of the day, but we are ready to present. And I'm going to turn it over to my Deputy Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Committee. We're going to just give you a quick overview of some of the things taking place in the BPD thus far this year. We'll start off with our clearance rates. Just keep in mind that we're very early in the year. You'll see our homicide clearance rate is at 10%. However, in one week, that jumped from 10 to 47, which is where it sits right now. What happens early in the year, even if we clear a case, like for example, our very first homicide of the year, the 700 block of Glover, we had a warrant for that individual. We arrested him last week, and it takes about a week to 10 days to make it through the system and count as a clearance. So you see in one week, it went up 37%. Our non-fatal shootings are right about the same, robberies are right around the same, 23%, burglaries at 13, and rapes were at 18. You'll see last year was zero. That's just because none of the clearances got through within the first 15 or 16 days that we looked at. Next slide. And then you see our significant arrests. Already this year, we've arrested 28 individuals for robbery, 94 for narcotics violations, four for murder, 98 for handguns, and seven for attempted murder. Yes, sir. And they were, as we get into the gun-related crimes, those are all increased as to our numbers last year. Plus, last year was one of the first years in many years that we arrested more individuals. And one of the clear indicators, I think our robbery, I mean our handgun arrests were up about 18%, and we arrested more people for narcotics last year, for the felony narcotics than we did in previous years. And then we go over to gun-related arrests thus far this year. We're at 98 arrests, which is up 10%. 91 of those arrests are made by patrol, which is about 17%, and the non-patrol units, which those numbers have been decreasing, are right, they're down around 36% below. That's only because the amount of people that we have outside of patrol has been dipping significantly as we try to build the patrol units. And you'll see the Central is off to a really good start, 24 handgun arrests already this year. And next slide. And this slide is a little, I just have to explain it a little bit because normally we don't want to see red, but if you look where red is on this indicator, it actually should be green. Those are inverted numbers. The 17 and 27 were actually down 37% as opposed to being up 37%. And as you had asked today compared to last year, as of right now, we are down 35% in homicides. We had 31 this year, year-to-date last year. Right now, this year, we have 20. Non-fatal shootings were down 33%. We had 48 at this time last year, and we have 32 so far this year. Our rapes are actually up a little bit. You can see those numbers are inverted a little bit. Carjacking is down 23%. And robberies overall are down 30%. So so far, we got off to a really good start this year. We know it's still early, but we're hoping we can continue that trend as the year progresses. And then we go into district homicides. And I know we have this, it just shows where we are this year, year-to-date, but you'll see some of the districts that really struggled last year have got off to a pretty good start. For example, the Southern had 56 homicides last year. They only have one this year. Northeast had 45, and they've only got one. So we've got off to a pretty good start, although no loss of life is good, because we're always comparing individuals' loss of life and being shot. And then you go into the non-fatal shootings. Again, district comparisons. You see some of the districts that really struggled last year are off to pretty good starts. The Eastern, 117 individuals shot last year. As of this, we had one, but we did have a couple, so it's up a little bit higher now, but we did have a few others. But we've got off to a good start with most of these statistics so far this year, and we'll try to push that along. And then we go into domestic.
Deputy Commissioner, I just want to, just for clarification, when going through the homicides and shootings by district, just that those numbers are comparing this year to a full year and previous years?
Yes, sir.
So just so that when folks are looking at that.
Yes, those numbers, and every number you see there except for that last column is year-to-date for that year. 2022 is the last number compared to, for example, in the Central, 2022 had 75 non-fatal shootings. This year, they have, so far, they have two. And then we get into the domestic and youth violence, where this year, you can see, we had four homicide victims already this year compared to three last year, and we've had nine non-fatal shooting victims. Two of those shooting victims and one of those homicide individuals occurred at the incident in the Southwest. The other two individuals were actually adults. Our rapes are up slightly, robberies with the juveniles are up a little bit, and then ag assaults are down, burglaries are down, larceny, larceny from autos, those are all down as well as auto thefts. And then we can go through, these are, again, these will just show your year-to-date numbers, but how many arrests we've had suspects between the ages of 10 and 17. What doesn't show on here is probably one of the most significant numbers that you may want to talk about, because I know the city is already in litigation with the so-called ghost gun manufacturers. About 40% of our ghost gun arrests last year were individuals who weren't old enough to purchase a weapon. So it came out to about, I think we had 400 in some arrests, but it came out to about 40% of those individuals were under the age of 21. As you can see here, we had, last year, we had 22 individuals, suspects, that were suspects in homicides that were under the age of 18. The robberies were 102, carjackings 85. That's the category that has really escalated. We just had one individual, and part of the issues that we run into, we just had an individual, he's 15 years of age. We had him arrested on two carjackings and five burglaries, and he was found not competent to stand trial, was released from all those charges, back to the family. And we stopped that individual the other day in suspicion of committing two or three more carjackings. So those are some of the things that we're battling with the younger individuals, younger offenders, getting right back out and dealing with them. I believe we had, this year, we have about 16, last year, we had about 16 individuals we arrested multiple times for carjackings in the same year. And then we go overall juvenile arrests. You can see where we are. Grand total of 682 last year, I'm sorry, 682 as far as they were 17 years old, but you can see where the age group goes along. So far, it's at six for 17-year-olds. Our biggest category is right that category, what I talked about, a 15-year-old. And one of the things that we had trouble was finding a place where we could get him some help. We're trying to see if Roca may be able to help us with him, even though they normally handle someone that young. But we're trying to find some help for him before he recidivates or he becomes a victim when he tries to carjack or rob someone, and it doesn't turn out well for him. And that will complete our slide presentation, and we can just open it up for questions.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions, so we'll open up for questions for BPD and then we'll jump into MONCIE, because I think this data is really helpful for kind of setting the stage to understand what we're looking at. I want to touch on a comment that you made earlier, Commissioner, that we know to be an issue. Often, we'll catch a young person in an act of a crime or figure out that it was them, and very often, they're let out without very much follow-up. What is the process now? Who should be picking up from there? And I'm not sure if MONCIE knows or is involved, I just don't know. Can you tell me a little bit about what happens when charges are dropped on our young people?
Well, of course, the police make the arrest. The young person is usually brought to Department of Juvenile Services. From there, they're arraigned at some point, and it is determined whether or not they're going to be either remanded or released. But once we make the arrest and we bring the person to Department of Juvenile Services, every decision there is external from the Police Department. And there's not involvement from the Police Department on whether or how that decision should be made. And I would say all of the entities who arrive at that decision are external from the Police Department. I would say that is a court decision, and purely a court decision.
We don't have anybody here from the State's Attorney's Office, do we? No, we don't. Director Jackson, I know we're not to your part yet. Do you have any insight on what happens in these instances?
So to the Police Commissioner's point, thank you, Mr. Chair. To the Police Commissioner's point, once a juvenile is delivered to the juvenile facility, our partners from a DJS perspective engage, and the only time that MONCIE is engaged is if we are talking about pre-arrest or post-arrest diversion. Those things only come into play when we're talking about Category II offenses. Those eligible offense types include unauthorized use of a motor vehicle, larceny, shoplifting, CDS possession, destruction of property, or misdemeanor assault. Outside of those offenses, MONCIE is not typically involved and wouldn't be able to answer any questions associated with release, associated with any offenses outside of this purview.
Okay. And maybe it may be wise for us to, I don't know if we're going to get into that later, or, okay, great. So we'll come back to that and get a little more deeper into that. Thank you. I'll also touch on another thing that you said, Deputy, with regard to ghost guns, and that 40% of ghost guns, or 40% of ghost gun arrests were connected to young people under the age of 21?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any insight on how they're getting the guns? What do we know about that pipeline and that connection?
Basically, all you need is a credit card and be on the internet, and you can order the parts. They'll come in boxes, and then you just assemble them. You don't need very many tools, and the tools do not have to be high-quality to be able to put a handgun together. We had an individual, I believe it was last year, who actually used Scotch tape, believe it or not, was able to put a gun together with a little bit of metal and Scotch tape, and it actually worked. It fell apart after he shot it, but it actually worked, and we had one of our individuals, an individual was shot with that last year.
Councilman, for every arrest, we make attempts to debrief. What I mean by debrief, to, there's an opportunity for us to, in private, in a secure way, ask the individual questions about the crime they committed, and maybe about other crimes that they may have knowledge of. Very few, if any, are admitting to us about the purchase of a ghost gun and having it shipped to their home for their own personal possession and use. So we make attempts to try to debrief them, but outside of, because you can, beyond a credit card, you can use a gift card with the same amount of money to make the same purchase. And so even if we can't track a credit card, many can just go to the store and buy a $500 gift card and make the same purchase.
That's really, really, it's really helpful information. It's disappointing and frustrating for a number of reasons. When you say 40%, what does 40% actually work out to be? How many individuals?
So I was trying to open up. I believe when I figured it out, it was about 40, about 120? I believe that's what it was.
120.
I can get you the exact numbers. I couldn't open the report. I was trying to open it here on my iPad. It won't open up.
Thank you, that's helpful. And just the last piece here, I was kind of going through the slideshow. Thank you for pulling that data together, it's really helpful. One of the things I noted was a significant increase in young people getting arrested with adult charges from the age of 15 to 16. So at 15, we had, for all years, 2018 to 2023, 25 total people who were 15 years old and were charged as adults or arrested for adult charges. At 16, it jumped to 399. It's a night-and-day difference. So respectively, 14, we had 10, 15, we had 25, 16, we had 399. That screams to me, of course, we know adolescents, but there's an opportunity around 15 to intervene. I'm curious what more we know about that? What changes from a 15-year-old to a 16-year-old? I know a lot changes from a 15-year-old to a 16-year-old. But is there anything in particular that maybe we see through these numbers that we should intervene in? And I'm sorry, we don't have the school system here, but I wonder if we see also a significant drop-off in attendance or other indicators and red flags from that age range? I don't know if you have any insight on that, you may or not, may or may not.
Yes, sir. The biggest thing that changes from that age group is once you turn 16, there's a whole group of other crimes that we can start to charge the individual with. So if you're 15 and commit the same crime, we may not be able to charge you as an adult, but if you're 16, we can charge you as an adult with that crime. So that most likely explains the difference in the numbers, just the realm of possibility of charges that we could place against them.
What is an example of some of those crimes, just so I have a sense of what that means?
It's most of your felonies that involve, anything that involves a firearm, murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assaults, certain other sex offenses that can be charged as adults that you can't be charged with as the age of 15.
Got it.
To follow up on your question about the ghost guns and where they're coming from, we recently, we recently served a warrant and confiscated enough of the parts to assemble 20 ghost guns that the individual in the home had them hanging as decorations on his Christmas tree. And so to somewhat answer the question without actually knowing, you know, we know that those guns were likely not going to all be for one person, but were some way going to be sold or given to other people on the streets of Baltimore. And so while some people are buying them one at a time, some are buying multiple guns and then reselling them further on the black market, underground, to other individuals through probably cash purchases and not credit card or gift card purchases. And so those are the two ways that they're coming into the streets, from the manufacturer, and then moving around on the streets through hand-to-hand.
Thank you. I will turn it over, we're going to start on this side and work our way over. Councilman Glover, do you have any questions?
A moment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do think that at some point, we want to, if DJS will join us, they are a state entity, so they're not obligated to come before us, but I do think it's worth a conversation with them. From some experiences in my district, we, I have to be careful because it's juveniles, right? It's very difficult to sort of talk about specific cases. You know, it seemed to me, in my limited knowledge, that, you know, depending on the offense, then DJS would either put an ankle bracelet, or they would not be able to even do anything depending on the, and so it seems like what we have to have a conversation about is, you know, the nature of the offense, you know? Obviously, if we're seeing kids at nine years old doing offenses, like what is the warning to make sure that we're intervening in the families and intervening in what's going on? That's super critical. I guess my question then is, you know, if we do go back to that, to have a, you know, see if they can, and also the State's Attorney's Office, I also have two juvenile masters who are retired in my district who have talked about sometimes that their hands are tied in terms of being able to do more for young people, and that's a state law thing, you know? A lot of those laws have to be changed at the state level. So it does get frustrating. I guess my question is, you know, Commissioner, we're seeing nine-year-olds getting arrested. And if I understand the process, arrest them, hand them over to juvenile masters and DJS, and then you don't know what happens to them, right?
Well, I'm not saying we don't know what happens to them. I was giving the answer of what was our involvement, which is, at that point, we have turned them over to Department of Juvenile Services. We're not part of the decision whether they get remanded or released. And so it's, the Police Department is not the agency or the entity to offer the services that they need to change their life conditions, change their decision-making and all of that, you know? And so once we have turned them over to the custody of DJS, it's, for us, it's a court matter of whether or not they get released. The concern for us is if they're being released, are they being released on low bond or no bond? And are they being serviced and rehabilitated to the point that someone is helping them to not reoffend? But that's not the Police Department, that's other disciplines beyond the Police Department.
Right. Well, I do know, at least in talking with all of our majors, like they actually try to make an attempt to do some, you know, hand-holding through the, not necessarily through that process, but just to say, you know, hey, Roca, hey, Yap, hey, you know, now that we have these resources.
We make referrals, yes. We make referrals all the time to Roca. And, but sometimes, you know, once we drop them off, if they're remanded, we might not know how long. If they're released the same day, we may not be made aware of it. And so to the extent we know, yeah, we can try to get help from those who are partners, and we do that all the time. Sometimes, Roca's age 16 to 24, but when we talk about a nine-year-old, that's something very, very different. Or a 12-year-old, that's very, very different. So it's very, very challenging. You're right, we agree. A lot of this has to do with laws at the state level and what needs to happen after the person is arrested. What needs to happen to prevent them from committing the crime in the very first place? What interventions and prevention methods need to happen to change their decision-making because we've changed their life conditions? We've done all of those things. The question is, who are the "we" that does that?
Yeah, well, there was a, you're familiar with this, a strategy called the Public Safety Compact about eight, 10 years ago, and many of us actually were involved in, you know, creating that, where once a juvenile was arrested, they would be offered diversion, and then the cost of not putting them in prison was given back to the programming, right? I will be political and say that our governor had stopped, our previous governor had stopped that program, so I do hope that our new governor will bring it back, because my understanding is that the recidivism rate was very low. So I'm hopeful that we can do that. I had a quick question about the guns, and then I'll, the ghost guns, and then I'll pass it on to another colleague. So the state last year banned ghost guns, right? They said, no, you can't sell them online, you can't do, you know, all of these things, and yet people are still doing them. So I'm wondering what the issue is that we need to advocate in our, at the state level to try to change that so that folks aren't buying these online?
And I'll take that one, sir. For the record, Michelle Wartzberger, Chief of Staff for the Department. So I've worked on ghost gun legislation for many, many years in my previous role, and there were different types of bills, there were outright bans, there were efforts to get the ghost guns serialized so that if we find it, we can trace the original owner or whatnot. And so that's what passed, a requirement that within a certain period of time, an owner has to serialize the ghost gun.
That's not happening.
There are some holes in that, to put it very politely. I'd be happy to chat with you about, you know, perhaps some other ideas, but the bottom line is, someone who is creating a ghost gun from scratch for sport or because they like that hobby of creating, it's just like creating a model car. car or something. For Christmas, I bought myself a, a model, a miniature book, bookroom, bookstore. And so, you know, like, I'm going to build that because it's going to be fun theoretically, right? And so some of these folks do this for fun. They don't go and shoot it, they just create it. But there's a lot of folks who, this is their business. They build it, they sell it, or they build it and they use it. And that's, that's where the gap really is. So there, there's definitely some, some holes, some issues that we, and some legislative ideas that we might want to pursue.
So the law says that they need to serialize it so we can track it, but I thought that there was an outright ban to which, like, the gentleman who was hanging the tree, you know, the, the parts, you know, like ornaments, he could give us information about who he bought it from, and then we can work with our federal partners to go after them. That's not how that works?
I, I think there's a penalty, a penalty for being caught unlawfully having the ghost gun.
Right.
Then there's a penalty that, well, there's a requirement that it gets serialized, and beyond the timeline to get it serialized, there's a penalty for failure to do that. I don't think that it, the, while it is called a ban, it is, it doesn't.
Oh, it's not banned on sale.
It's just serializing.
Right.
Yeah, it's serializing, so it doesn't prohibit people from buying them and having them come in.
Yeah.
It's about getting them serialized, and it is about the penalty for the person caught with it and, and committing the crime with it.
So, so just to clarify, and I want you guys to confirm what I, what I believe to be the case, you can still purchase a gun to put together. It ju, it just must have a serial, serial number, that's all. So it's no longer a ghost gun, per se. You should always be able to track that gun back, but you can still purchase these guns online very easily in a way that is virtually untraceable with gift cards and otherwise, which is part of the problem.
Right, okay. Yeah, I think that our legislators will probably be taking that on again this year, so hopefully we can, you know, advocate with them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And then, Mr. Chair, Madam Councilwoman, if I can, I know you mentioned diversion. That was one of the biggest things that we worked on, recognizing that, you know, we do have young people that we really shouldn't be incarcerated, we should be connecting more to services. So you do know, we launched our youth diversion policy about a year or two ago with partnership with Monty. We work with Department of Justice to really get down to language. So it comes to not just age, but also category offenses of what we can actually, of where, where we're looking to pre-arrest. You know, we, we catch a young person, if they're involved with, most of our misdemeanor offenses, the goal is to connect them to community-based, you know, organizations or doing some further deep dive into what family dynamics may be, what the need is in doing that assessment from there and connecting them to those services. So we also partner with Monty. We do have a program that's piloting right now in the Western. I think that is going well. I know that we have a lot of other commanders, you know, throughout, you know, the city that's like, hey, bring this program to our district, help us as well. So I just want to let you know that we are and have recognized just that same thing. All of our young people doesn't necessarily need to be criminalized. We recognize the trauma that it causes as well, and trying to figure out how do we connect them to services that best meets their needs.
Yeah, I, I know that we've done that in my district with a certain neighborhood that had lots of carjackings. We've worked very hard on that together, so I do appreciate that. And I think it's, it's, it's good that the, you know, police have started to move in that direction of trying to at least recognize that there's a, a young person and try to connect them to the right, to the right. So I appreciate that.
And Council Chairman, I did find that report. It's a hundred and forty-three out of three hundred and sixty-seven gun arrests were under the age of twenty-one. The youngest was thirteen years old.
You said a hundred and forty-three out of how many?
Three sixty-seven.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner and team. And Deputy, I appreciate you raising the point around diversion. I think it's important, we had a, did a listening session with a group of young people about a week ago from groups like CLIA, B-360, and SOMOS, and to a T, what the young people said is, we feel criminalized in this city, and I think that's a real problem. And these are young people who are participating in an after-school program and channeling their energy into something, but that so many young people have that feeling and that perception, I think represents a real challenge. And, you know, I would just caution us to be careful in having these conversations without young people here represented, because I think that sometimes we, as adults, can make assumptions and not always get it right. But that said, with our young folks who are getting in trouble, what attempts are we BPD making to connect? I know ROKA and YAP are very kind of central in some of the conversations and the diversion, but other groups, we are a rich city when it comes to organizations that work with kids. So are we fostering connection with groups like Community Law in Action and B-360 and others that are, you know, have, have the heart and minds of our kids and can, I think, be a force for good instead of tumbling down the path of just punitive?
I'll start off and I'll, I'll invite any of the other members of the team to jump in. I think for the misdemeanor offenses and the minor offenses where diversion is the most appropriate thing, I think there are relationships. I don't know that they're all as formal and documented and seared with contractual obligations like they are with perhaps ROKA and YAP, but there are relationships and there is a willingness for us to do that. When it comes to the violent offenses, the carjackings, which is a violent offense, shootings, homicides, carrying the illegal guns, which some might think is not a violent offense, but it is the precursor to the violent offense. It is the same demographic, those carrying guns make up the same demographic of those who are victims and those who are perpetrators. It's not a separate group, they're the same group. So we want to make sure we can change the reason why they do that. We would love to change why they do that and stop them from doing that as opposed to arresting them for having done that. Nevertheless, when it comes to those type of offenses, I, I would say that we are making the arrests, because largely we are responding to the complaints of the citizens who are calling us, telling us they don't want to see that, they're fearful, and all of the above, that brings us to a location to observe it and make that arrest. And then once we drop them off, again, it becomes purely a social service, the delivery of social services, which is not in the house of the police department.
If I could add here, Councilmember, I think it's a, a strong demonstration of the partnership that Monty and BPD have to the Police Commissioner's point. It is not his officer's job to provide that level of social service support. It is ours, though. And so as we talk about the connectivity between the two agencies and specifically asking your question about organizations like CLIA and B-360, Monty, in fact, funds CLIA. The mayor has invested significant dollars in the B-360 program. And so when qualifying pre-arrests or arrests are made, and I'll talk more about this when it's Monty's turn to speak, we are absolutely making the referrals to these community-based organizations for our young people so that they have connectivity to folks that look like them, that demonstrate empathy, that understand their lived experiences, and who also are willing to help them explore what stepping into their wholeness looks like.
And we also have the Explorers and Cadet Program, but one of the biggest things that we do is just something we recently started with the Mayor's Office of African-American Engagement, is the individuals walking in the street, basically we refer to them as the squeegee workers, but that's not what it's only designed to, it's also designed to get any of the homeless or anyone who's working or walking in the street committing violations. We work with Dr. Bunley, and we have him take care of those individuals. He has a, a great outreach program. He knows the individuals by, by heart when we talk to them. We walk up, Colonel Jones actually stopped in one of the corners last week and was talking to the, the individuals. They actually went to the same high school, I think it was, the mayor would kill me if I didn't tell them, they both all want the Murvo. So they were all, they were all talking about the old days at Murvo, so. And then ironically, the individuals that run B-360, I went to high school with him and met with them about a month ago about starting a partnership with them. So we're doing as much as we can not to arrest these individuals to try to divert them to whatever other resources we can turn them to.
Yep. So to the Colonel's point, to the DC's point, we've realized, you know, working either through the established community groups, whether it be ROKA or YAP, and those who are not as well-established, our commanders are trying to divert as many, trying to address as many. We have become very good as an agency of pulling people out of the river when they're swimming, but now we're also looking actively to find out ahead where they're falling in at. So either through our Youth and Community Division, either through our Neighborhood Coordinating Officers who are in the district, we're taking that active, active approach in reference to addressing those issues and woes related to juvenile and juvenile issues for public safety.
I appreciate all of that, and I think everyone in this room, everyone here certainly is deeply concerned about robberies, carjackings, and the amount that are being committed and then recommitted by young people. And so if we're seeing the high rate of recidivism, clearly something along the chain is not working. There, that rehabilitation piece that is supposed to be in between isn't happening. I know there's a debate right now in Annapolis about who we charge as children and who we charge as adults. I always get nervous when we start talking about charging more children as adults, purely because children aren't adults, they're children. And we know enough of neuroscience at this point to know that their brains aren't fully functioning and aren't fully developed, but it does feel like there is a missing piece around what is the appropriate consequence or intervention, ideally within the juvenile system, that moves a child to not reoffend, that changes behavior. I know that's not something that you all in this room can solve, but it just, it feels like we have these conversations a lot, and that slice of the puzzle still feels very, very sorely lacking.
Well, you're, you're right. We have that conversation a lot, and the, the people who we should be having it with are usually not in the room. And we got to have it, and we need to make sure that every part, I, I say this all the time, I say this, as a matter of fact, in front of the state legislature when I was in Annapolis just last week. When we talk about enforcement, we have always been conditioned to talk about enforcement from the lens of policing, the police interaction leading up to an arrest. I think I, I may have used this analogy with the, the chairman. Enforcement really means the police interaction leading up to an arrest, the prosecution leading up to and through the conviction, the incarceration leading to the person's rehabilitation and the reentry. All of it makes up enforcement, but we've only asked questions and we've only answered them through the lens of what do the police do in the enforcement? Enforcement is all of it, and but rarely are the other entities at the table.
You, we speak the same, same language, yes. Yeah. Thank you. Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I did have one question related to diversion programs, and this is specifically for Monty. Do we have, I know we always focus on youth and young adult populations for our diversion programs. Do we have any diversion programs that includes or specifically targets the family and/or parent, realizing that, one, these young people have to go back to a home and a community, and I want to make sure that, you know, to your point, Commissioner Harrison, that we are not only focused on the individual, but we are focusing on the comprehensive family infrastructure.
Thank you for your question, Councilwoman. So to provide some additional context around sidestep, and, and I won't go into too much detail again until it's Monty's turn to speak, Baltimore is only the second jurisdiction in the country to introduce pre-arrest youth diversion. And in doing that work, it was critically important to us that we not only divert youth from a path that could potentially lead to a negative outcome, but to also provide opportunity to that youth and their family, because we understand that familial supports are key in ensuring the success of the diversion.
Thank you very much. And if, if during your portion, if it can be discussed about the efficacy and success of that particular program, not only on the individual, but also the family infrastructure as well. My second question actually has to do with the data, the data presented today related to the domestic and youth violence, specifically the rape portion. If I understand the graph correctly, we are four hundred percent over or four hundred percent under? And it's specifically the one, two, the domestic and youth violence slide, the first one? I just want to make sure that I understand the data correctly. It's a four hundred percent change? Is it four hundred percent over or four hundred?
Yes, ma'am. It's five, five this year compared to one last year.
So it, it went up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So do we have, so the one thing that I often kind of just really bringing it all together from a behavioral perspective, not only are guns very important, but these other smaller behavioral, behavioral public safety issues are an issue. Do we have any diversion programs and/or kind of like tracking for any diversion programs specifically geared towards rape and sexual assault?
So what I would say, we partner mostly with, of course, Turnaround and House of Ruth when it comes to domestic violence and, of course, sexual assault.
Okay.
And these cases, they, they are, they have some interpartner nexus.
Okay.
Some, you know, some familial, they have some, they have some connection in knowing who, you know, is, is one of those things. So normally what we do, Turnaround is almost there with us instantly when we receive any, any incident when it comes to sex assault. They, they are every step of the way with us with our victims and making sure that we're wrapping them around with all of the services that they may need. I think one of the things, as I spoke to earlier in our hearing, you know, about violence against women, is that we most certainly can improve in how we're supporting or connecting the individual who's offending to services. I think that's something that we can grow, definitely can improve on, not, not necessarily just for BPD, but I think in a whole holistic view. I think that's something that we all need to be looking at. How are we connecting the offender to same services and support, just like you're saying, for mental health, but also behavioral health?
Yeah, and you actually hit right on kind of the coordination approach from this morning's hearing to where we are now. I often see diversion programs strictly focused on like guns and, and in that aspect of youth violence, but what we are experiencing is that interpersonal violence among youth and young adults is a very serious issue. It's a very serious issue within our LGBTQ plus population, like having that comprehensive assessment of where we are in the city, not just from a BPD perspective, but from a Monty perspective, and also even from our community-based organizations. House of, House of Ruth is one that I know is, is oversaturated with people, you know, with people that are coming, receiving services. So just making sure that we have that intentionality when we're talking about our programs, that we are focused on larger public safety issues, but not forgetting the smaller behavioral public safety issues that are leading up to those larger public safety issues such as gun violence and things of that nature. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Glover.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to add some things to the conversations of my colleagues. I, I do want to say that I appreciate Monty with the, the pre-arrest program and that, you know, now the way it seems like the laws are about to be shifted, especially when it comes to our young people, that we can't just rely on these programs in the police department, but as a community, we really need to step up. It's going to get really serious. You know, criminals understand the law, and what, what to think about is those adults that will have our young people committing these heinous crimes. And I think that it's important that we, as a community, start meeting our young people where they are. And again, dealing with this mental health crisis that we have in Baltimore City is really, really important that this time around, in 2023, that the village, meaning everybody is on board, to make sure that we're looking after these young people. Because I said again, the way the laws are being shifted on a state and on a federal level, it's going to be hard for us locally to kind of change those laws. So we're going to have to step up to the plate, and again, that village is going to need to be there. I know firsthand, like, I'm on the streets every day, I'm in the trenches, and I hear these conversations. So I just ask and I plead to the city, I plead to the community to get out of your comfort zones, and I ask the men of our city to step up because we can't keep allowing our queens to do our job. So it's our time now to take back our communities, but we need your help. So I'm asking that everybody be on board to help with the Baltimore City Police Department. So I'm asking that everybody be on board to help with the Baltimore City Police Department, to help with Monsi, our, you know, private partners that we have dealing with mental health, behavioral health, and also with people like Dr. Humphrey has a trauma response team that's going out and meeting these families where they're at different times of the night. So that's all I want to really add to this conversation, though it's part of the conversation. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Councilman Porter, you had something else?
I did have one question related to the just interstate trans... Yeah, interstate kind of transmission of guns from like the south. Have you all been seeing that in the city of guns coming from outside of the state? And what's the process or protocol kind of working with our state and federal partners with prosecuting those individuals?
Yes, we have two ways we do that. We, number one, have detectives working at ATF who have federal commissions and so that they can investigate beyond the city limits where our jurisdiction would normally end. Then we have two members of our department who work at the U.S. Attorney's Office to help with that work, the Firearms Intelligence Unit. And yes, when we find that there are purchases made and then illegally transferred into the city, as we see about half of our guns come from outside the city, but within the state, the other 49, 50% come from outside the state, across the other 49 states, especially along the north, the eastern corridor. So we have investigators that work to make those federal cases when we see guns coming in. And people are illegally bringing guns in and illegally transferring them to people in Baltimore. And when that happens, those cases are made, but that's federal. And we have investigators that do that work and track that. And yes, we work to hold the people all the way to the origin accountable, to the extent that the investigation will take them back. One person, two people, to a manufacturer, to somebody who bought a bunch of ghost guns and brought them in, we prosecute those all the way through federal court.
Okay, and so just so that I have a clear understanding, so ghost guns are within, like if the aspects of a ghost gun come from like Alabama, we can prosecute that person or that origin or that manufacturer based on federal offense?
Well, just buying it...
You know what I'm saying? So like, what I'm saying is that I'm trying to make the distinction between a fully operational gun as opposed to shipping parts between states.
I think I understand your question. The, just the purchase of the ghost gun itself in and of itself is not the crime.
Okay.
Because people buy them, have them shipped. It is, and the new Maryland law requires a person to serialize it once they get it. Or, and it does have penalty for people being caught with it unlawfully, especially prohibited people, people who are under the age of 21. And there's another penalty for the gun being used in the commission of a crime, which is another entity. When people illegally obtain guns, like straw purchases, a person with a clean record buying a gun for someone who cannot buy it, and then having that gun brought to the city, yes, cases are sometimes made when we track the person who bought the gun for someone who could not buy it, illegally gave it to that person, that gun wound up in the streets of Baltimore. Those are tried federally, it's called straw purchases, and yes.
Straw purchases.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. This conversation actually brought a couple of things to mind, recent conversations and recent issues that I've had in my district. One was a recent rash of burglaries in a string of neighborhoods in my district. Ultimately, we were able to get video. It turned out to be at least two young men, possibly more because there were so many that happened. What was interesting about that is I was thinking to myself, how would we have known that these young people were not where they should have been in school? And what could we have done to intervene with those young people earlier? Now, of course, the school system is not here, but these kids were young. They looked like they were like 11 and 13 respectively. They were really, really young. And, you know, I think we can talk a lot about, of course, once BPD gets involved, what we can do to catch people who are criminals. And in this instance, these young men, they were criminals. They went into homes, they stole things, they completely destroyed the homes. And it looks like they were actually just having fun. They did it a number of times. So, you know, the Police Department, your job is to help find those folks and bring them to justice. And then, you know, of course, you hand off from there and the State's Attorney's Office has got to do their job. My question is always, I've been thinking about this and a lot of different things that we've been involved in, when we think about the process. You talked about, you know, you guys come in, you make the arrests, you find the person who did the crime. But what happens before then? There are always early indicators. Those kids were doing these things, you know, early in the morning, around nine, 10 o'clock, soon as people left their homes, predictable times. It happened at least two or three times in this particular neighborhood. There are red flags and we're missing it. And I don't know if that takes communication with the Police Department, with Monsi, with the school system, with the State's Attorney's Office, with DJS. Who knows, who cares? What I would love, love, love to see is more systems thinking about these problems so that we could actually be, you guys can only do so much. And, you know, our job is, you know, impartially to make sure that you do everything you're supposed to do and do it well. And I think we also should be thinking about those systems. Monsi plays a part in that as well, making sure that the programs that, you know, the diversion programs that we have and other resources that we provide that would hopefully incentivize young people not to get involved with some of these activities are actually working. But yeah, I've been thinking a lot about these systems. And, you know, I'd really, really like to see more coordination and collaboration. Certainly, we can call you guys in for a hearing like this today, but, you know, sometimes these council hearings are not necessarily the most productive ways to address these problems. These are mainly meant for oversight. I would love to see these coordination meetings happening outside of these hearings, but just a thought. With that, I've spoken too much. I do want to hand off to Monsi to tell us a little bit about what's going on on that end.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do not have a presentation for you today. For the record, Shontae Jackson, Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, I am joined by members of my team here today who will partner with me in providing you all with an update. Thank you to both you and members of the committee. I am grateful that we are spending time not only talking about enforcement strategies, but talking about prevention and intervention as we really seek to create a safer Baltimore. So specific to juvenile justice or youth justice, key components that I want to highlight for the committee today revolve around sidestep, the youth diversion program that we talked about. Also want to share with you all, to your point earlier, sir, the systems design work that we are doing to ensure that outcomes for our young people are shifted from what we're seeing in recent history and historically. We'll also talk about the work that we're doing around intervention and prevention programming in our school systems. And last but certainly not least, I think that we can't talk about youth justice without talking about the justice for youth victims and their families. And so while I'll be sharing some high-level information with you all, I will be turning it over to my colleagues to get into a deeper level of detail with you. So as I mentioned before, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement here in Baltimore is the second agency across the country to implement a pre-arrest youth diversion program. The first of which is Los Angeles County for folks who want to do any research associated with the work that they are doing. This work was born out of the uprising. This is work that young people, to Councilman Cohen's point, young people in the Western District and in Baltimore City Public Schools helped the Baltimore Police Department and other community-based organizations devise. This is work that Monsi has been executing for about a year now. We started in the Western District because that was the hotbed of the uprising. The goal of that pilot was to take what are considered category two offenses that I mentioned to you all earlier, and work very closely with the Baltimore Police Department to train its officers around what would be considered divertable offenses so that we can step away from being the second highest jurisdiction in this state to incarcerated children. The, the number of folks that we were targeting diversion for was 35. The number of folks that were actually offered diversion services were 13 during the pilot. I want to be really clear in saying that that number directly relates to the category two offenses that were eligible for diversion. Of the 11, I'm sorry, of the 13 folks that, just looking at my notes here, of the 13 folks who were eligible, 11 of those young people have actively engaged with our Youth Opportunity Coordinator, who unfortunately is not here with me today, and have been referred to Mental Health Services, to Substance Use, to the Baltimore City Public Schools Reengagement Office, to Baltimore Healthy Babies, to TCA, and for food stamp services. And so when we talk about making sure that we're handling familial supports, to Councilwoman Porter's point, making sure that we're bringing the whole family into the conversation is critical. Because we're talking about juveniles, we obviously have to have parental consent in order to engage these young folks. Other points that I would make about the sidestep program is that we are co-located in West Baltimore in the Center for Urban Families building, which by definition supports the entirety of the family unit in making sure that we are helping young folks make the best decisions possible. So that's a high-level overview there. I will say that where we are from a next steps perspective is we are currently partnering with an external evaluator to not only look at the pre-arrest diversion that we took care of in 2022, but to also look at the post-arrest diversion. Because ironically enough, post-arrest diversion and pre-arrest diversion, both look at category two offenses. And so the question boils down to why are we arresting young folks if they're eligible for pre-arrest diversion? And there absolutely are some mitigating circumstances. If a young person has a prior record or there's something else going on, then there may be cases in which an arrest is necessary. But we want to make sure that we're doing an effective level of evaluation to determine how many of those should have had the opportunity to get pre-arrest diversion. Along the same lines, we are working in partnership with the Baltimore Police Department, the Consent Decree Monitoring Team, to talk about what scaling this program up across the entirety of Baltimore City looks like. And so while we have partnered with Center for Urban Families and other organizations that I mentioned to you now, we have well over two dozen applications from other community-based organizations around Baltimore City that we are currently reviewing so that we are funding them as partners for this pre-arrest diversion work. So I'll stop here on the sidestep piece and shift a bit into the intervention and prevention programming for school-aged children. I'm not going to spend too much time talking about the work that we're spearheading into MIRVO, Carver, and Digital Harbor because Deputy Director Miller is here to do that. But I will share with you all that we did just award dollars for social emotional learning, which happens at a younger age and is very much on the preventative side of our work, is considered a restorative practice. And we'll be going, partnering with two community-based organizations, and we'll be going into upwards of seven to 10 schools in doing that work. The last piece before we talk about victimization that I'd like to just check in with you all on is 3.3 in the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. This talks about making sure that, to your point, Mr. Chair, we're implementing agency-level changes, that we're thinking about the systems that have to change in order to do this work. I want to remind this committee that in partnership with the Baltimore City Health Department, the Police Department, DJS, and a whole host of other partners, including our medical facilities, our social services facilities, we know that between 2016 and 2020, 208 of our young people died. And we know that 91% of those deaths were preventable. About 45 of those deaths were homicides that were committed by gun in the age range that is the sweet spot for our young people. It's the space and the place where they start to grow into themselves. And so coming out of that report, there were some key recommendations that the Health Department made with regard to early intervention points that we should be taking advantage of. What are the lowest common denominators that we see? Chronic absenteeism, exit from the foster care system, seeing, witnessing violence in your life, having a parent that is incarcerated. These are risk factors that we know to be true and have identified as points that we need to be making sure that we address early in the lifespan of young people. And so the work that is happening now, the work that has happened first and then the work that is happening now, through its ARPA funding dollars, specifically dedicated to child fatality review recommendations, Monsi did fund Baltimore City Public Schools to train over 500 of its professionals in mental health and first aid to be able to identify when a young person is in crisis versus when an adolescent is just being an adolescent and making sure that we're responding appropriately. In addition to that, we've recently had conversations with the Health Department, with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and with Baltimore City Public Schools. And in the coming weeks, Mayor Scott, members of his administration, will be meeting with Baltimore City Public Schools and their board to discuss the work associated with the systems design work and funding that work so that we are intervening sooner rather than later. The last point that I'll make, and then I'm going to turn it over first to Deputy Director Miller to talk to you all about the work in schools, and then over to Deputy Director Nash to talk to you about the young folks that we're engaging on the GVRS side of the work. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the justice that has to be served to the families of young people who are victims. And while there are too many to mention, I will say, and I believe that this number is a number that the Health Department just shared with me, 55 of our young folks last year, under the age of 18, transitioned. And that number's up from 2021 by a couple of numbers. Monsi specifically has partnered with the Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore Health Department around making sure that we're providing victim services to those young people's families, to their siblings, to their community. So when we are intentional about remembering names like Deontes and Kelseys and Nikelas and so many others, know that we are truly demonstrating partnership and making sure that we're driving justice forward from an enforcement perspective, but also from a prevention-intervention rehabilitative perspective. I'll turn it over at this time to Deputy Director Miller.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Crystal Miller. I'm the Community Violence Intervention Deputy Director for Monsi's Gun Violence Prevention Lane. And one of my roles is to oversee the implementation of our school-based intervention program. We are currently in that implementation phase. And what that looks like is creating job descriptions for the intervention specialists, who will be the staff who work directly with the young people in the three schools selected for the pilot at MIRVO, Carver, and Digital Harbor. We'll also be putting together job descriptions for the supervisors for each of those schools. We'll also be putting together job descriptions for the supervisors for each of those schools. So there will be a total of nine staff for the pilot program, at, you know, three staff at each school. Those individuals will be employees of the CBO who is selected to administer the program once that organization has been determined. For the intervention specialists, like I mentioned, that we're working directly with the students on a day-to-day basis, really looking to see what those conflicts are that are rising inside the school, and some of those conflicts that may be arising outside of the school that could potentially enter the school and vice versa. The supervisors will ensure that the model is being implemented correctly and working directly with in-school resources to help bridge that gap and build a partnership between the program and the school. So we're all working together to reach the students and provide them with the services and resources they need, including resources for those, those students' families. We have visited each school, done a tour of the school, to really understand the culture of the school, the layout of the school, and to identify space for the programs to work out of. So we're working directly with the principals and some of their other staff that they have identified to be partners with us in developing this program. All schools are really excited about having the pilot enter their schools and are eager to get things going. Our timeline is the expectation for the program to launch before the end of this school year. So staff will be in the schools in late spring with a full launch at the start of the new school year. During this process, from now until implementation in late spring, we'll be doing some community engagement events. So those events will be both internal to the schools, but also external in the communities directly surrounding the school, but also where the students are traveling to and from. So that'll help us build those partnerships with existing CVI programs to see where needs are needed and to help the staff be able to communicate when there are conflicts that arise and where those existing CVI programs need to help with additional mediation and conflict intervention for incidents that may arise. This also will be an opportunity to inform school resources what the program is and help build that partnership so they understand what we're working to do. And then we have the opportunity to understand what those resources are and how we can build a partnership and work together. But we're looking into what are some immediate programs and the immediate vicinity of those schools. So are there neighborhood associations, are there churches, are there business associations that we need to connect with and build a partnership with so they understand what we're doing and get some buy-in from those organizations? So they're partners of ours as well in this work. I'll leave it there because, like I said, we're in implementation, so there's a lot of work to be done to really get this off the ground. The, in, in addition, I'll just say this, but we're also looking into what training opportunities are available to staff. It is extremely important that the staff are properly trained, especially working with young people, that they're getting training, not only that the schools require, but they're going to help them be able to perform their duties and working with young people and addressing some of the issues that young people are facing on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Terrence Nash. I'm the Deputy Director for the Group Violence Reduction Strategy at MONC. As of the end of December 2022, we made contact with twenty-six people that were under, seventeen or under, through the Group Violence Reduction Strategy. That means that we identified twenty-six people, seventeen and under, that were at the greatest risk at the time of either shooting somebody or being shot because of this violent social networks that they were involved in. Of those twenty-six individuals, twenty-four of them were enrolled with our service providers after direct communication and were still enrolled at the end of 2022. Mostly, that's going to be ROKA. In a few cases, that's YAP, both providing services of life coaches, education, employment, They have contracts with therapists when needed. And so far, none of those individuals have re-offended. We did have one individual that was deemed too dangerous, and in order to intervene immediately in violence, there were law enforcement-only contact. And then we had another person that we made direct contact with through direct communication, but denied services, and that person was subsequently arrested for a felony offense.
Mr. Chair, are we stand ready to answer any questions you might have?
Excellent. Thank you. Really appreciated the update on the, the schools program. I, I'm really excited to see that rolling out and really curious to see how it goes. And my first thought, as you were talking, was thinking about how we measure the efficacy of the program. More specifically, understanding what the baseline is for the schools that we're going to be working in. What the baseline means, I don't know yet. Maybe you do. But more broadly, thinking about, it could be violence, it could be anything else, but how do we know whether or not the interactions that we're having with these young people, their families, and their communities, whether or not those interactions are actually helping the people that we're targeting? So if you could give a little insight on that.
Yes, sir. I'm happy to start first. And then Deputy Director, if you're interested in adding on, feel free to. So given that we partnered with Baltimore City Public Schools last summer to determine what the three schools were going to be and used both quantitative and qualitative data to make those assessments, we know what the suspension rates and arrest rates look like for students across those three schools. While we announced this last year, I'll share again here. Last school year, Carver had eight arrests, Digital Harbor had six, MIRVO had five. And we also looked at suspensions for fighting, suspensions for attack on a student, and suspensions for physical contact with school personnel across those three schools. And so obviously, looking to see those numbers significantly go down in the two years that we're in the pilot. Qualitative measures that we looked at were whether or not there was restorative practices already implemented in the school, or if there were restorative practitioners available to us to partner with in the school, the principal's readiness to be able to take on and support this level of programming, in addition to a few other qualitative components. Director, if you're, all right?
And you said you're in the process of implementing the program now. You mentioned that we're pulling together job descriptions to fill the staff for the program. What was the timeline, again, for when we expected to fully launch, fully launch the, the pilot?
The timeline is hiring will be, this first phase is job descriptions and hiring through now until early March to prepare for training of staff during the early spring. From early spring into late, mid-spring timeframe, we'll begin, of course, continue with community engagement, activities and informational sessions, and bringing in students in board to really get a gauge of what they feel some of the issues are. And so they have the opportunity to have their voices heard in this process as well. And then getting the staff in the school prior to the end of the school year, so late spring, that will help them to have a better understanding of the school layout, how the school runs, and what the day-to-day functions of the school, and to begin interaction with exists, existing faculty and staff and resources in the school. So before the end of the school year, we'll have staff in the schools working directly with students and staff and faculty.
And then, last question before I hand on to my colleagues, and I'll start again with Councilman Glover, if he's got any questions. But for the three schools, schools that we chose, was there any logic for why we chose those three?
Absolutely. I would say they ranked number one, two, and three across the, the measures that I shared with you before. Over the course of last summer, we did identify seven schools. And so, and it wasn't just partnership with MONC and with the district proper, but also with Baltimore City School Police. Because one of the other data points that we looked at was how many young people they had to provide diversion services for, in addition to the suspension data. So these are the schools that ranked one, two, and three from a data perspective, and also met the other qualitative measures.
Got it. Thank you, Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director. Obviously, very excited to have the program at MIRVO. I represent MIRVO. My question was on the baseline data. We have a, young people who may be, you know, fighting or causing conflicts or whatever in school, but we're also seeing it outside of school. So does those baseline measures include both or just inside the campus?
Yes, we're looking at baseline data and currently doing some research on where students are traveling to and from to get to schools because the students aren't just traveling from the immediate communities that the schools are in. So really understand what some of those issues are that are in those communities. We have data, especially from some of our existing CVI programs and partners, that students may be coming from those direct communities. So it'll help us be able to have a baseline to gauge about the incidents that are happening outside of school that may be traveling inside of school. So we have a way to determine if the program is successful and reducing those conflicts outside of school before they meet the school doors and also traveling outside of school.
Oh, great. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were counting those as well because we have had some incidences outside of the school, not on the grounds, but even in the neighborhood, that, you know, we want to make sure that those conversations are happening with the young people, you know, not just about how to work within the schools, but outside. And then the other question I had about that was, you mentioned, and I appreciated your briefing a few weeks ago, more of the community engagement piece when you're ready. That include, I mean, MIRVO has a very, very active parents and alumni association, so want to make sure that we're working with them. But also, I have, I have a group of residents right outside the school who keep watch. They keep watch, okay? They're going to try to make sure that none, nothing happens to those young people. And so we want to include them as well. These are very dedicated residents who, you know, see it all, right? But they're also the ones that are telling them, you know, you got to get to do, you got to do, you know? And I think that, you know, that's a tight-knit community there. So we certainly want to make sure that they're also included. So I'm imagining that that's the kind of community engagement you're also looking for as well. Great. No, I, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Director Jackson and team. Director Jackson, I want to start by just congratulating your office and us for being the second city to implement the diversion. I think that's an important value statement for Baltimore. I do want to push a little bit on the school-based intervention and just understand, I think we have a tendency in this city, we stand up programs, we do them for a while, we get excited about them, and then we sort of abandon them, or we just slowly defund them, or stop funding them, or just, you know, the, we go to the next thing. Director Jackson, you had mentioned a couple times restorative practices. Knowing that Baltimore has been the epicenter of the movement for restorative practices across the country, I'm curious, why create a new program versus just expand into that infrastructure? Knowing that we have groups like the Positive School Center out of University of Maryland who do this at a very high level, that we have groups like Restorative Practices Baltimore, Holistic Life Foundation, ACOBEN, and on, and on, and on. And knowing that it, like community schools, is something that feels really indigenous to this city, like in, in the lifeblood of Baltimore is this idea of restorative practices. We have the data, Chairman asked about data, we, we have the data to say it works. There was a study that Hopkins did that showed a forty percent reduction in suspensions over a five-year period. After Jeremiah was tragically murdered outside of MIRVO, there was a press conference where Teachers Union, Parent Community Advisory Board, about eleven youth organizations all stood together and said to the school system, we should, we should expand restorative practices across every school and really do it with fidelity and pour our resources into it. And so I guess just where I struggle and what I'd love to just understand is, why not just invest in what we already know has been working in our city versus create the tendency that all of us, we're all creative people, want to do, which is create something new? Be curious if you could talk about that.
Thank you for your question. I would offer that what we know to be true is that both restorative practices and community violence intervention work, and that they are not mutually exclusive, that we are not looking to replace or create something new as it relates to the introduction of this programming, but rather expand on, continue to evolve this community violence intervention ecosystem. Because restorative practices is very much a part of that work, too. I mean, it, it literally takes folks who work, live, and play in our community to help young people navigate their way through emotional regulation, through emotional intelligence, through self-awareness, through this communication of what community norms looks like in very similar ways. And so I would offer that it's not an or proposition, but a both and, and it's one of the reasons why we're making sure that the schools that we go into are schools that have restorative spaces already established, and we are partnering with the restorative practitioners and partners in that school. With regard to starting new things and then the funding going away, while the National League of Cities has done the initial funding of this work in the, in the amount of $700,000 over the next two years, I would offer that just in the last thirty days, we have heard from the Governor's Office that they are also interested in funding this. And so we have grown even more funding than we originally had in order to support this work. And I'm really excited about the opportunity that we have to demonstrate what a continuing evolution of an ecosystem that benefits Baltimoreans, including our youngest people, our, our promises, will afford us.
No, that's great, and I appreciate that. And again, I know that this is, you think a lot about these issues, and so does your team, and I commend you all on that. I guess, could you help me understand kind of differentiating this program from restorative practices? Or maybe it's just a question of like, what exactly are we trying to do through this? I would have asked while the deputy was up there, but I, I just want to really be able to understand in my mind, because it's great, I'm glad NLC is investing, I'm glad the Governor's Office, but, or and, anytime we start a new program, that is a whole infrastructure build, that is a whole startup thing that we have to do versus us not always doing a great job of sustaining that which already exists.
Just one thing before I turn it over to the Deputy Mayor. I would offer, just as a, a small, but I think poignant, observation that evidence-based practices don't become evidence-based until innovation steps in and we afford ourselves the opportunity to build.
I think you just gave her a promotion.
You did.
He called her Deputy Mayor.
That's okay. There's something in my future I'm not aware of yet. Just to give a brief description of what the program is, so the intervention specialist and the supervisor, like I mentioned, will work directly in the schools. They'll have space in the schools. They're working directly with faculty and staff. The intervention specialists will, they will not be hall monitors. I want to make sure that's clear, and this is not Safe Streets in the school. It's a completely different program. Will they be working with students, really get an understanding of what students are dealing with, what some of those issues are that may put them on the brink of becoming high-risk, or what has pushed them to become high-risk individuals, where they're engaging in activities that could result in violence, both inside of the school and outside of the school. What makes this different than some other programs is that we're looking to work with existing CVI programs to really understand what's happening in the communities directly surrounding the schools, but where the students are traveling from, since they're coming from all parts of the city to attend these schools, to prevent to prevent those conflicts from traveling across those community lines into the school and outside of school across community lines, so it's not traveling across the city. This is an opportunity to really address violence in schools, but also in the communities where the students live in, where they have to travel to and from across boundaries of communities just to get to school, to get an education, so they can travel through those communities safely without the risk of engaging in conflict, being threatened by conflict. What also makes this difference is that there will be resources available for those students that spanned a wide gamut of things. So, if there's wellness and wholeness practices that we're able to introduce students to, we'll be able to do that. We'll have youth ambassadors who will be part of this program, and that will also range from students who are at the risk of being, at the highest risk, and also high-performing students who have some exposure to violence, whether in their family or directly in their communities, where they need additional support to keep them from crossing the line and becoming high-risk, young people who are engaging in those activities that put their lives at risk. We want to find opportunities for those young people to have jobs, whether they're working over the summer, if there is a need for them to have jobs during the school year, but really looking also in connecting with their families and finding out what some of those familial needs are that can make their households a little bit more stable if they need that. This is all a part of that partnership and working directly with the schools and what resources are in the schools to really be able to identify what challenges students may be facing. So, this, this program has the opportunity to not only address violence and conflicts in the schools and outside the schools, but to support the students and their needs, so they are able to matriculate through high school all four years, or whatever many years that they have, into young adulthood.
That's a really helpful description. I appreciate it. I would invite you to come speak at the Trauma Informed Care Task Force and share what y'all are doing, because I think it'd be, my colleague and I, it'd be just a good opportunity. I didn't know, others may have. I will, one question and then wrap, but how do, how do we identify, or how do the students self-identify, knowing that, to my colleague's point earlier, a lot of violence among young people is interpersonal, that like cell phones and stuff that is going on that we as adults don't know about, and then escalates? And so, like, for the young people, especially those who are not like raising their hand and saying, "I'm involved, you know, I want to talk to an adult because I'm involved in a risky, unsafe conflict with a partner," or something along those lines, like, how are we, how are we supporting those students to identify themselves or be identified?
So, one of the things this staff will be trained on is on how to monitor social media and how to read through social media to really understand some of the language the young people use on social media, since that's how they communicate. Also, as the intervention specialists are working in the schools, they'll be able to really understand some of the things that are happening. Who's in the school, who's showing up half-time, who's showing up full-time, who's only showing up just because they need something to eat, who's not necessarily participating in school. And a lot of that is that relationship that will be developed between school faculty and staff and other resources in the school to really understand who some of those students are. And the role of the youth ambassadors will help to build that trust between the staff and the school population and the program, so they're able to invite those young people to participate in the program, to share what's going on. If you need a moment to sit for an hour to calm yourself, let me give you some techniques to help you work through whatever conflict you're working through, the staff will be able to provide that to the students where they may not be able to get that in other places in the school. And so, that will help to identify who those young people are, who may not self-identify, who may not volunteer that, "Hey, I need help with this. I'm dealing with this, and I'm not able to communicate this effectively because I am a teenager." That, that's that opportunity to provide them those resources and help identify who that is.
Great. Yeah, just knowing that a lot of violence, and particularly intimate partner violence, is silencing and does not create space often for young people to talk about it. Really appreciate the description. Thank you both. Director Jackson, I do hope that it is a both and and that we do push for more restorative practices across our school system, because again, we have a program that we know that when it's done well, it works. And so, I look forward to seeing this in addition and us pushing for more of that as well. Thank you, and thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Porter.
Thank you. Director Jackson, I did have a question about the staffing levels of MONC. Can you comment where we are in the current staffing levels of MONC and how this particular program is either integrated and that both-and approach from a staffing levels perspective?
I'll speak to the, the second half of the question before the first half. As the Deputy Director mentioned earlier, the, the staff for the CVI intervention, the intervention work that's happening in our schools is going to be managed by the community-based organization that is administering this program, and so, they will not be MONC proper, if you will, staff members. With regard to MONC staff count, at this point, we're at about approximately 40 FTE positions.
Okay, out of how many? 40 FTE?
I'm sorry?
Out of the total?
Oh, no, I was speaking to the total count that we have. We're currently recruiting for two, soon to be three positions.
Okay. So, approximately at a, we're about 75% fully staffed within?
Oh, no, I would offer that we're, we're close to 90, 99% fully staffed. We're recruiting for two positions out of 40. The reason why I said soon to be three is that we just received a grant award that I alluded to earlier around the warrants analyst. That would be the third position.
Okay, perfect. That's, that's actually really great to hear. The second question that I did have, excuse me, has to do with what Deputy Director, soon to be Deputy Mayor, I think you're doing a great job, by the way. I think you're great. So, that's why I'm saying that. I want to really understand the interaction between kind of like the cultural implications of violence that we're seeing in our city. And I say that all to say, in District 10, we have many different cultures, particularly within Benjamin Franklin High School, and we are noticing that our Safe Streets partners down there are not being able to kind of handle the cultural interactions, not, not in the school, but outside the school that are bleeding into the school, more on like our MTA bus lines and our shopping centers. Like, can you explain to me how we'll be able to remedy, remedy that issue?
I'm not sure I understand the question when you say cultural interactions.
Yeah, so, we're talking about language barriers. We're talking about, you know, neighborhood barriers. You know, I'm from, I'm from Emerson Village, east and west. You talk about, you know, those types of dynamics that may or may not be as evident and that we're seeing the cultural fabric change in the city.
Absolutely. I will turn that over to the Deputy Director, who also manages that portion of our CVI work.
Directly speaking about the school program, we are looking to hire at least one staff member who is Spanish-speaking directly for, I will say, the Digital Harbor School. That request has come directly from the principal, and so, we're looking into making that part of that hiring process specifically for that program. And really, this gives us the opportunity to really look further into the dynamics of the community and some of the needs and resources that may be needed by community members, to be able to provide those resources to them as we continue to expand the ecosystem.
Sure, I appreciate that. My only caution, my only caution is that when we're looking at specifically, when we're, for instance, we all are aware that New Air Academy is not going to be a school in District 10. Most of those, most of those young people are either going to Digital Harbor or Benjamin Franklin, and we have already seen an uptick within violence within the neighborhoods from that kind of, and so, I guess I'm just trying to understand, I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, how you all are going to mitigate that, because if Safe Streets, you know, those violence interrupters, they are not able to do it, the school, you know, the, the school interrupters, they're not even in Benjamin Franklin as a, I don't know the implementation strategy or plan around that, but you mentioned Digital Harbor and not Benjamin Franklin. What's the, what's the in-between there that we're, we're able to kind of like use as a lever to kind of measure success for this particular program?
Got it. Thanks for clarifying your question. I would offer a couple of points here that there are openings across a few of our Safe Streets sites in which we've got to be really thoughtful about what the demographics of the neighborhood consist of in making those hiring decisions, and that's something that I'm absolutely going to be charging Deputy Director Miller with doing with the team that is rolling out. But in addition, and in addition to that, given the evolution of our CVI ecosystem, it won't just fall on Safe Streets to do this work. We want to make sure that we are engaging community moral voice members through our group, group violence reduction strategy, in addition to other CVI programs, that for all intents and purposes can be credible messengers because they are of the cultural demographic makeup that you're referencing. And so, some of the other work along this line is working actively with regard to translating our materials into other languages. We just recently produced a GPRS brochure. We're in the process of producing a CVI brochure and making sure that the translation into Spanish happens first, but determining in partnership with neighborhoods, with council members like you, with MEMA, what the demographic makeup of particular neighborhoods are to make sure that we're able to reach as many folks as possible is something that we're also working toward.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, I have one more question, please.
Go for it.
When we're talking about the scaling up of this, of this program, when do you intend that we would have an official scale-up within, I'm assuming that you're doing it based on a tiered approach. You have your tier-one schools that are most immediate, tier-two and tier-three. What is, what is your plan with scaling this up so that, you know, we can implement this in all the schools?
I will say that I, I don't know that we would implement it in all of the schools, right? So, there, there are some schools where we are not seeing the, the level of suspensions or violence necessitate this type of programming. And to the Councilman's point earlier, if restorative practices are embedded in these schools and we're seeing that suffice because there aren't these sorts of issues being present, we're not going to go into a school just to say we're in a school. We want to make sure that we're effective stewards of city resources. To answer your earlier question about what scale looks like, we're not going to have that answer for you all, quite frankly, until at least a year into these three schools. We want to make sure that we know, we know at that point what we don't know now in order to determine what an effective scale-up program looks like.
And are these only high schools, or are we looking at elementary and middle schools as well?
For this particular work, this is high school only. It's also the reason why we're investing heavily in the social and emotional learning partnerships with community-based organizations like Holistic Life, like Bee Theory, like all of these places, in the schools that I, that I mentioned before, the seven to 10 schools that we're entering into.
Okay. And do we have a plan for elementary and middle schools?
That's the social, emotional, yes. And so, we just issued or awarded two community-based organizations to enter into schools like Dorothy Height, and I have the list here, and I'm happy to share that list, but there are about seven to 10 elementary and elementary middle schools that, that will benefit from that partnership.
Okay. Mr. Chair, can I, can we actually make a committee request to get a list of those schools?
Yes.
Thank you.
I had one question, as you guys were talking about a number of things. I'm always thinking about data, and, and thinking about the school intervention program, what access to data we have with some of those early red flags? And Director, I think you mentioned a couple of things that you, folks leaving the foster, foster care system, witnesses to violence, or folks who've been involved in violence and instances where parents are incarcerated. I'm sure there are more, but those, those certainly sound like the kind of things that would be precursors, or not precursors, but...
Risk factors, for sure.
Risk factors, yes. It also had me thinking about our conversation about six hours ago, when we were talking about domestic violence and specifically the ACEs indicators for young people. So, I'm not sure if we're thinking about that when we think about who should be interacting with this program. I hope and I'm...
We absolutely are. So, one of the other things that came out of the Child Fatality Review Report, and it is listed on the mayor's website, that five-year report, are the risk factors that I've referenced to you all. In addition to that, the work that we're undertaking when we step through this retreat is to identify any additional risk factors that educators are seeing, who are in the classrooms with folks, along with other partners like DJS and DPSCS. But one of the things that came out of that report is that young folks who have an ACEs score of four or higher are more likely...
Can you just explain what the ACEs means?
Yes, adverse childhood experiences. And they have a direct correlation to many of the risk factors that we've talked about. Parents with substance abuse issues, being in the foster care system, parents who may be divorced, mental health issues. It, so, coming back to what the report found, young folks who have an ACEs score of four or higher are more likely to either become victims of crime, be poly-victimized, or become perpetrators of crime. And so, while all of the ACEs aren't indicative of, while there's overlap between the ACEs and the risk factors that we'll be identifying as early intervention points, we want to be really thoughtful about the work that we've got to do so that we're going as far upstream to the Colonel's point earlier in the process to provide intervention services.
And more specifically for that question, how easy is it for us to get that information, I would imagine, for young people? A lot of that is guarded. A lot of that probably takes some one-on-one conversation and digging, but is that something that's readily available?
So, so that's a loaded question. And this, this is work that the, the Councilman Cohen and I had engaged in long before I was in this role with regard to looking at national best practice and what folks are doing as far as California around making sure that we are having conversations with parents very early on as they're getting wellness checks for their children, around the identification of ACEs. I know that there are members of the Trauma Informed Care Task Force that are actively doing this work in our local medical systems, but coming forward to how easy is it for us to get the data, I would offer that unfortunately, it feels easier to get the data after we've lost a young person and we're doing the Child Fatality Review after they've transitioned, right? We're having conversations, "Hey, Johns Hopkins, have you seen this young person? Hey, DSS, did you? BCFD, BPD, did you?" And so, a part of the recommendations coming out of the Child Fatality Review Report is the need to make sure that we've got integrated data, so that we are able to talk to each other and understand when the first entry point into a potential risk factor happens for a young person. And so, we're actively working on that now.
Yeah, that, that's, that's exactly why I asked, because I would, I will say on one hand, that can be incredibly helpful for us for taking a look back and being a little bit more predictive, but certainly it would be helpful for us in the moment, knowing certain predictive measures, what we should be focused on and who we should be focused on, because I believe we, we can't boil the ocean. We don't have, you know, billions of dollars to throw into children across the city. I wish we did. But, you know, if we're able to be more pointed in our approach, I think it could go a long way towards seeing, you know, us turn the curve on some of the issues that young people are having. So, any other questions?
I would just say to the Chair that ACE screening is work that is going on within the Trauma Informed Care Task Force and our medical subcommittee. I'd also say that I know in the, in Governor Moore's transition team on the Health Committee, we've talked about statewide screening. Director Jackson mentioned California. They were the first to, as a state, start screening for ACEs and it, just like a regular checkup, you know, your, all the, all the other things we screen kids for, that it becomes a standard practice. There are definitely challenges around data share, like you mentioned, around, just because we know a child has a lot of ACEs doesn't necessarily mean anything, and it can actually... and it can actually reinforce harm unless there's like a really, there's a really appropriate intervention that we can then bring to play. But offline, would love to chat with you about some of what's happening with that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. With that, we're going to close up. I do want to say, excuse me, sir, you're speaking out of order and you can't just, you just can't speak up in the meeting. Thank you. Excuse me, sir. Please, don't do that. I'm more than happy to come to talk to you after. I appreciate your passion for the issue. It's precisely why we have this hearing today. I'm more than happy to talk to you after. I just want to kind of summarize what we heard today. You know, on our enforcement side, it sounds like there are some sort of loose ends in coordination once we do interact with our young people, holding them accountable and make sure that they don't end up, for a second time, interacting with our system. And I'm really excited to hear some of the stuff that, you know, we're kicking off and beginning to learn and measure from our school intervention programming. You know, this is an incredibly important topic. I mean, we're talking about children here, and I think we're all invested in seeing this get better. But I think we need to be very thoughtful. We need to be honest about our progress and measure it in a way that is helpful for us in the future so that we can make sensible decisions about tight budgets. And so, I really appreciate all the work you guys are doing and all the help you guys provided here today. With that, we are in recess, and I'll see you guys next time.